Mr. McCoslin, can you please take a roll?
Mrs. Spies.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Janisak.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
All nine members present.
Thank you. Before we get into the facilities items, this is the opportunity for anybody to make public comments on agenda items that we've published. Are there any public comments? Any call-ins?
One sec. No call-ins.
Okay, thank you. Let's dig into the committee agenda then, Facilities and Services Committee. Mr. Modrak.
Yes, Mr. Christensen. Now, there are four items on the agenda here tonight. First one will be a progress report on IMS renovation project by SiteLogic IQ. Second one will be review of the design development cost estimates with Maserro CM Services. Three will be discussion withdrawal collective about cost estimate. And the fourth item will be discussion only on future of the elementary school. At this time, we have a presentation for SiteLogic on update of the IMS project.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Shane Kelly with SiteLogic. I'm the project manager for the Independence Middle School Project. I stated here, I have an update on Phase Two of the project.
Shane, could you just verify that the power's on and the microphone, is it on?
Now it is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, to begin, I'm just going to go over phasing, you know, Phase Two of the project. As you can see, it's broken down into four different phases. This will run from right now, when we're currently working, to October of 2024. The area we're currently working in is what I would call the beige area. It's 2A. It's running from now through December of '24. Again, and then we'll continue through A, or sorry, through B, C, and D, which are shown on this phasing diagram. The 2A section that we're currently in, that encompasses the seventh grade wing of the building, the art rooms and the tech rooms. And again, those will be turned over in December of this year. So just to touch on the work that's currently going on, we started back in May on this phase, and the bulk of the work has been demolition, MEP demolition, architectural demolition. That includes taking out existing systems, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, all architectural components. That's walls, casework, flooring, ceilings, anything aesthetic that you would see inside the building. We're moving in on exterior demolition. That would be the facade of the building, taking out parapets, windows, replacing those. So that work is scheduled to start next week. We've also begun MEP rough-in in some areas as of this week. Framing layout has begun, and then coordination and planning is continual process, and we've got that going on always. And then, we're moving through some middle review right now. There's still some open items that we're working to close out. I believe Mike's going to touch on at least one of those that is critical and up and coming. Just jumping ahead to some photos, again, what you see here is, it's a good thing. There's really not too much to see, and that means we've emptied out majority of the building and the wing of the building we're currently working on. So that would be the second floor, seventh grade wing. As you can see, we've, you know, demoed entire classrooms at this point. If you were to walk on that second floor, demolition is entirely complete at this point. That's, you know, walls, floors, doors, ceilings, mechanical equipment, as noted on the drawings, of course. So this is just continued photos of demolition. As you can see, we have new ductwork arrived this week. We're working on installing that, as well as running electrical feeders at this point in time. And then finally, this is just the first floor that we're working in, the art tech area. Again, that has been entirely demoed and cleared out. That's walls, architectural components, mechanical components, et cetera. Again, this is a pretty short update for today. At this point in time, we are, you know, aggressively working through demolition. I think we got a great jumpstart over the course of this month. We're currently on schedule. Things are tracking well. You know, fortunately, with the, with the duration of this first phase, a lot of the, you know, material lead times and concerns we had with supply chain that, you know, previously affected the industry have been mitigated, for the most part. So we feel much better about that. Again, most selections had already been, you know, approved because we're carrying them over from the first phase. So, again, just to summarize, things are in good order out there, working through that Phase 2A, and everything is trending on time at the moment. Any questions at this point in time? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, I was going to request that. He's not on the agenda, but we're hoping that the board can squeeze Mike in here to...
Sure, there'd be no problem. Thank you.
It's related to the Phase Two, part of Phase Two.
Thank you, sir.
You might want to stick around for this, yeah.
What's that? All right, so what we're looking at here, do you, just, just so that I'm aware, did you guys get an email with this in it over the weekend? Okay. So, one of these options is labeled the tan option. The other one is, is the gray option. The tan is what we had talked about for the stain color for the outside of IMS a year ago. And we had a meeting on site last week, and we're, we were looking at the, a mock-up of the stain, and through talking with the administration, they suggested maybe we considered a gray stain instead of a tan stain. And so, what I wanted to do is mock that up for you guys, or render it on these drawings here. You guys take a look at it and basically hopefully give us some direction on what you think looks, what you think you would like better. I mean, tan is going to keep, a couple of things to keep in mind. Tan, the tan finish, you won't really, from far away, you may, the building will just look cleaner. It's going to have the same feel. The gray, it'll feel different up on the hill. It'll feel like a different color and everything. So, and then, the reason that the administration was suggesting the, the gray is to give the building a new look, a whole fresh new look to the building. It also look, works a little bit better with the red brick on the, on the top image. There's not a whole lot of that red brick where it would ever touch the gray, the gray brick, but it does go a little bit better with the red brick. I think both would look, both options would look good. It's pretty much just here to kind of get your feedback on, on if you'd be okay changing it to gray.
Right, and I think it was my recommendation that we bring it to the board, because what you approved in terms of the entire project is different. This would be different. And it was clear, I believe, to us and to the architects, when you launched into the IMS project, that you wanted it to be different. The reputation it had, the feel that it had, the datedness of it was the concern, and this really is a departure from what you thought you were getting, if we moved to the grayer, gray color scheme instead of the tan color scheme. I'll say for certain that the, it does change the look. The tan even cleans it up. I think we mentioned to you probably, what, eight months ago, last summer, they put a sample of it up in the back of the building, and if you drive by, it's very noticeable, the part that they restained. So it really convinced me and the rest of us that it was, it was the right move to make, to give the building a whole new feel, a whole new look. Changing the color, however, was not something we thought about until now.
I guess, when you look at that, those color options, you know, the building today is kind of a beige or tan.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with this coating that you're going to put on, but if you consider maybe 10 years down the road, is there going to be some, you know, wear? Is there going to be any peeling? Are we going to start to see the base layer, so it's, there's tan scratches, but gray surface? I mean, is it, is there potential it might look worse down the road, just in normal weathering?
No, because we wouldn't be recommending something that would do that. This is more of a, it absorbs into the concrete. Fortunately, this is, the brick out there isn't like a smooth brick. It's porous. It's not even really brick. It's called concrete block. It's just in the shape of a brick. So you kind of lucked out in the scenario, in that scenario, that this is a, a concrete unit that is porous and it...
More absorbent.
Absorbs it in there, yes. If it was a brick, you would have exactly the problems you're talking about, where in 10 years or so, it would start to peel, and you'd have half the building peeling or something, and you have to go back and re-apply. But this is going to absorb into the concrete. So, it's a, I think it's a really good solution for fixing the different ages of brick you have on the building, and also just cleaning the whole thing up, so it looks like it was all done at one time.
Okay. No matter which color you pick?
No matter which color we pick, yes.
What is the life expectancy? I know it won't tear, but as we get sunlight beating on one side and not the other, and as you know, the sunlight is differential on both ends of this. I would tell you right now, my dad who did brick and whitewares and all of that for 40 years, would tell me, "I'm taking something that's maintenance-free and requires a power washing and making it maintenance." So what's the maintenance on it? And can, and could, do we have to have that professionally done, or is that something that can be done on staff?
I guess, which, what is your first question?
The maintenance of coloring all this. Because there is going to be maintenance to it, because you're coloring it.
So after you color it?
After you color it, what's the...
You're going to have to clean the building just as you normally clean the building, but nothing different than you normally are doing now. And then, I, the product has probably a 30- to 40-year lifespan. It's not something you're going to have to reapply after 20 years, like paint. So, but if you're, if you're, you know, if you have a regular process of cleaning the building, it's no different than what you're doing now. It's not going to wash off by being power washed or anything like that.
Or fade under this?
No, it's not. I mean, it's specifically for exterior use, specifically designed for this type of application. And, and when I say 25 to 30 years, that's the color, the color warranty, not just peeling or anything like that. It's the color, the color holding up.
So the guarantee is 30 years before it fades?
I'll have to look directly into the, the literature, but that's the idea.
That's my concern, because as you know, this building gets sun all different times of the day, different directions, different everything. So if I'm looking at this, my concern is, this is the whole back of the building, but this gets shade and this doesn't, and then I have a four-tone or five-tone building in five years.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but that's, this product wouldn't be recommended for that if that was a concern, that it would fade differently in the sunlight.
And to clarify, we're already staining the building. It's just that, our original plans, it was to do it in the tan, and we are now considering switching to the gray?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm going to abstain from the actual color decision, because I'm colorblind. It's your decision, okay?
Note that, note that for the record, please.
Please, don't have to sign a form, Doug.
So are we voting on which color we prefer? Is there discussion? Like, what are we doing here?
So the painter wanted to start last week. We held him off. And, yeah, so we need to know if there is strong support to move to the gray, or if there's strong opposition to move to gray. Because it was recommended by the administration to go to gray, and I want to make sure you would, you would support that. So is there, let me ask it in a different way. Is there any objection to switching the color from tan to the gray?
I think gray looks like a prison.
Okay, that's one no.
I, I did have a slightly similar first gut reaction, but also the tan looks like it's from the 70s. I mean, it's, it's a school building. It is, yeah. Right, right.
I'm from the 70s.
I didn't say it was a bad thing. I just said it was, it's just a fact.
I don't object to the gray personally. I'm wondering if that might even help with, like, you know, air pollution, kind of, kind of match, and it wouldn't be as obvious so quickly. I don't know. I'm, I'm fine with the gray, whatever you want to do. I'm good with it.
I, I'm just saying I don't have any strong opinions either way.
Okay.
Sorry.
So anybody has affirmed as Buffy on, on tan?
My personal preference is tan, but I have no objections to gray.
Okay.
That does not help at all, but there's...
All right. Darren?
I like the gray. It's my color scheme at my house. And it's not like a prison.
Two grays.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
I've come along and asked, I objected to any of this anyways, from 40 years of being a colored in my brain. But if you want something new, gray.
Two grays, two tans. We're skipping our colorblind guy.
I think, I think I'll lean towards the tan. It's just brighter, you know?
Gray. Gray.
Ooh, we are going down to the wire here.
I'm gray.
Three gray, yeah, we got, gray's in the lead.
Is it, is it 4-3 right now?
Yeah.
So if I tie it, Barry has to...
He's colorblind, so he could just flip a coin.
Does anyone, I mean, does anyone have, like, strong opinions about it? Because I, I probably do very slightly favor the tan, but it's not, it's like the, the least strong opinion one could possibly have.
If you go with the tan, it's the same building. If the administration is looking for something different, gray is going to be different.
Right, right. I mean, I, I think from, my thing is, from what...
Does it come in avocado green?
Kind of, kind of like Dr. Walsh already said. Ms. Turner? Like, like Dr. Walsh already said, the new tan, it does look different on the building. Like, you can see where they've already done it. I mean, it looks starkly different than what's currently there.
It does look nice, which is why I think we were really comfortable with the product and the decision to do the whole building that way.
What was, what was the administration's thought of why they wanted the gray going forward? What was the, it was just a new, it was just the new piece to it?
I can tell you, it was, one, it was, it would look different. The tan's not going to look dramatically different.
Right, just a little bit.
But it'll look fresher, cleaner, newer. So the gray will look different. They also thought, I mean, it's not going to, there's not a whole lot of this gray at the front of the building.
Right.
There's just this really, this cube here sticking up, and then way, way over at the edge of the sixth grade wing. But they thought it went better with the red brick than the tan color. So, but it was mostly for the, the new feel of the building. But part of me was a little hesitant too, because of what, actually what Buffy said, that it could look just like concrete block, if it's gray.
Yeah, that might be.
Put some stripes on it.
All right, I switch back to tan. Does tan win then?
Yeah, I think that would do it.
All right, good.
Okay.
And if you're, I think if you're on the fence and you're nervous, tan is safer than gray. If that helps you.
And just to make sure Mr. Scalzo goes home satisfied, you can't do the front tan and the back gray, or vice versa, right?
Like every other brick, one brown, one gray. That wouldn't bother me.
There's, there's Mr. Cromie's headline for tomorrow.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith, is that good?
Thank you. That's it?
You've got an answer.
Thank you.
That was fun, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I guess next we have Maserro. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Keever. I'm the chief estimate on Maserro and Services. It is great to be back in this room. We were here in 2009, the high school. Just glad to meet you all.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to report that our D design was doing very well. So our, kind of, 10,000 feet drawings were in pretty good shape. I'm pretty excited about how relative they were. This is just a three-page summary.
Green.
Okay. This is just a three-page summary. We do have a 20-some page full estimate, if anybody would like to see that detail. We're happy to share that. But, excuse me, just from 10,000 feet, we're approximately about 10% over budget right now, which is kind of where I want us to be. Half of that, 10%, is entirely in a contingency line item, which is reserved for design modifications that we learn as we go along the design process. By the time we get to bid day, that number should be at zero, so we shouldn't have any questions at that time. So that's half of it right there. The other half is kind of sprinkled throughout the estimate in terms of things like allowances. We, you know, the drawings aren't done. So we're carrying, for example, so many pounds a square foot for steel, because the steel design is still being vetted. Those can be big numbers, especially in a structure of this size. So I'm super happy where we are right now. We do anticipate this to shrink, but just as a word of caution, the market's still pretty volatile. The delivery times are getting back to normal, but the pricing is receding only very, very slightly. We do follow 29 commodities and three labor units through the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and those really steep, almost rollercoaster-like graphs that show where COVID hit, where steel went from $3,000 a ton to $8,000 a ton overnight, are starting to just crest and come back down. So we're, we're hoping that we'll be able to scrape some of that, that extra money, or that, that buffer that we have in there, out of it, as, as we, as we get close to the end. You know, I love to tell people, with detail comes clarity. So, you know, once we have an actual steel design and we can pull that information right out of the model, we'll know how many pounds will be in there. Not a pound per square, but we'll know how many tons. And that will affect a lot of other things as well. So I'm really excited to be where we are today. I know it's a huge number, and it is over budget, but I do anticipate this to shrink back into where we need it to be. And we can control it on bid day through the, the use of alternates. So we will probably be working, we probably will be working with Dan and Cassie on developing some alternates, so that on bid day, we have that flexibility to meet our, our financial goals in terms of what you have to spend.
Dan, what, in terms of next steps for cost estimates, you said this is the design development estimate. What comes next?
We have another estimate. It should be about 85%? Yeah. In that way, we'd really, we would really like to, in, in August, when we get those, that information, we'd really like to have, there to be no allowances in the estimate whatsoever, other than things like caulking and fire stopping, and, you know, these little monies that we have to carry, but are very hard to quantify. The big-ticket items, we'll know every linear foot of cabinetry, we'll know every door, we'll know every pound of steel, you know, the whole, the whole shebang. So I'm, I'm very encouraged to be where we are. I mean, we've, we've come out of a pretty, well, Mark knows, we've come out of a pretty rough spin here, and, you know, we really hope that this is going to get, get back into a manageable financial number.
So I guess, Dan, question for you is, you know, depending upon where this goes, I mean, I like the optimism, but if, if we can't get within our envelope, I imagine we still do have some nice-to-haves versus need-to-haves, and we have a list of those alternates that we can start making trade-offs and cuts from?
We are working on that. I'm less optimistic, because I'm not as detailed into the process as Dan is, of course, on numbers. It's just very difficult right now, because there just haven't been any new schools built in Western Pennsylvania at all this last spring. No bids for any new school. So we don't really know what the number, we're used to comparisons like that, you know? And so I remain skeptical, which makes us nervous designers, you know? And it's hard to make good decisions, but I think we're, we're working really well with the administration to eliminate things that are superfluous, and try to make sure we have quality products, but are standard of the industry kind of things. And I think all that is going well. Dan mentioned about the documents. We are, I'm not going to say we're ahead, but we have really been putting a huge push in the last three months on the documents. And in some areas, we have way more detail than we would normally have at this phase. And that's out of our fear of making sure that these guys have the documents to be able to price.
That's good. I'm glad you're nervous and fearful, okay?
Yeah.
That helps give us confidence.
Well, I mean, obviously, the worst thing, I mean, I think the, you know, this is a public meeting, and I think everyone needs to understand, right now in our industry, nobody honestly knows exactly how much things are going to cost. And that's such a frustration for all of us. And it's scary, and there's thousands of hours placed, not just your all-time, but all of our time. There's 35 designers, engineers on the job, and we don't want to do it twice. And, and we don't want that kind of a public embarrassment or challenge for, for you also. And so it's really important that it gets done right. But we do have to have some options. The problem with a job this big, though, is that the options, sometimes the normal options that we would do might be some material choices and some things like that. And they come in buckets of like 50, $30,000, $50,000, $75,000. But we might need millions. And so that's the hard part, is the only way to get things like that is to actually get rid of some things that you honestly need, or want, for sure. And that's the challenge that we're trying to figure out right now. How can we prepare to give you options on bid day? And the analysis that we're, Cassie and I were just having a big discussion with our team today about it, what we would recommend to the administration in that area, what can we, that could be big chunks, that could give you options on bid day. And so the problem with some of that is it requires duplicate designs and things of that nature. If we take a, take a big piece out, or do something significantly different, we have to do a design to accommodate that, and so it's a second design. That costs money too, and so we'll work through all of those options, and Maserro will be there, helping us figure out how much those things might cost and how much they would mean to you.
Yeah. No, I mean, Dan walked us through his process. I mean, there's, there's open confidence that it'll, will end up, it's just, you know, as a, as a backup, you know, we've got to be prepared, so.
Yeah.
And a lot of my confidence is that 20 yards down the corridor from my office is a $175 million union contractor, that I can go over there and say, "Has anybody bought steel lately from Sipple or whoever?" And they're going, "Yeah, we just did a huge casino down in downtown Pittsburgh, and this is what we bought the steel at, and that was eight months ago," or 11 months ago, or whatever. So I can get that real-time data, and I won't lie to you, I do put, I do, don't just, I add to it to do that buffer, and then it gets, and then it gets re-added on again with that contingency. So there's kind of contingency on contingency, to be honest, only because, you know, I like, I really like to tell people that Michelangelo started with a block of marble and then ended up with David, you know? So we're working our way towards that. But it's, it's really hard to say, "Oh, well, we want to put this back in," or, you know? So, you know, I'm super conservative, and we're just trying to walk down this as intelligently and thoughtfully as in process. And quite frankly, I don't think we're at a time right now to give CPR to the panic button and have those guys spend all kind of time and money doing stuff that we can't honestly, I can't honestly sit here and say, you know, "You're in financial trouble."
No, it's more about having the right processes in place right now, up until bid day. And so you're, you're doing your process, you do your process in terms of having contingencies and...
It's a really cool structure, though, I got to tell you. It's a really nice building, and it's really simple. Other than the caissons in that retaining wall, I don't see anything super funky in, in this, you know, building at all. So that probably is going to make it hard to VE, because it's pretty, it's pretty mainline right now. So, and VE is value engineering, sort of, sorry to get it wrong. Professional acronyms.
Circle back to that, you said 85% by August?
So the documents would be considered 85% complete. We can connect the dots really easy on something that, that... easy on something that's that done. And if there's a flare to throw up, we'll throw it up then.
So we're shooting for being ready to go out for bid on September 1st. That's the goal. I don't think we'll have a problem making that. By the end of July, we'll easily be to 85%. And so we should be ready for Dan to spend a couple of weeks at the beginning of August.
I'll be back from the beach for a week, so I'll be all rested up and ready to go.
And you'll take your divining rod and find a pot of gold. The, to remind the board, too, that we've been productively working with the municipality in pursuing two or three possible funding sources to support the project. We've had a productive meeting with our legislative representatives in Harrisburg relative to the RACP funding source. We've also talked about PennDOT funding for road access into the campus. And the most recent one was a SafeWalk, Safe Routes to School funding for the sidewalks that would be going in. So we can have, and we'll know presumably by fall if we're in the pipeline for any of that money that would enable us to offset some of the construction costs with grant funds to support specific pieces of that project. That's an important note that Ed can add to your optimism and a little bit to you.
A little buffer would help.
Yes. Yes.
But finding a money tree would help.
Yeah. Okay. So any other questions for Dan? Yeah, I'm sorry, Misera. Okay. And so we also, in anticipation of this information, asked Dan to attend tonight, not to show you any updated drawings, but to start talking about Act 34 hearing and project costs, and to give you that information relative to value engineering or finding potential savings in the design of the project. I will back you up in a sense to say that I think from day one, the design has always been very fiscally responsible. There wasn't any bell or whistle that was unnecessary in the design of the project. I think it is exactly the building we want it and need it to be. It's not overly simplified either. I think it's a sophisticated design.
I do think it is aesthetically a pleasing, will be a pleasing building, especially for the kids. A lot of its paint colors and material colors, doesn't really matter what the colors are, the cost is the same.
The gray.
Yeah. There wasn't any gray in the park theme, that's true. There is a little bit of gray. But we've concentrated, I think, on trying to keep the structure as simple and straightforward as possible. And I mentioned that occasionally when we're talking about this, you know, it just looks like in plan, it's just boxes. There's no kink joints and curves and things like that, which oftentimes give impression of cost increases. But, so it is making it hard to suggest to do something different here and there. It comes down to the number of spaces in the building is what it really goes down to. We have economic exterior, economic roofing system, repeatable window systems. There's very little, I think there's some focused creativity, but there's very little cost creativity impact, so. But we'll see.
Okay.
Still trying to figure out how much carpet costs, you know? So it pulls down to that.
Okay. You want to address these documents, then?
So we have an Act 34 hearing coming up. We haven't finalized the exact day, but I used July 25th as the potential day, which was one of the dates that was most recently floated for that. And this before you is a draft of the Act 34 hearing booklet. The only thing that's missing here is the financing component, which Doug will work with Alicia on to finish that out. And then we'll have that. To do the booklet, I've mentioned before that I did a draft, but to do the booklet, we needed Dan's costing to be able to do PDE PlanCon costing, to be able to create the, you know, work through their formula to be able to get the costing that goes in the booklet, that everything is based on. So that is, I put a little bit of an extra sheet in here. It's these two pages are PlanConD, two of the, they're the two financing pages on the PlanConD. And I essentially took Dan's numbers and put them in here, added the soft cost to the project, and essentially did the test and worked through putting, you have to put the building in also, so every single space is inside the PlanCon formula and everything to get where we need to go. And ultimately, to get to a point where we have a maximum not-to-exceed cost that we can report to the community and to, and a not-to-exceed building cost, which is what you're going to adopt. And I used, I basically didn't, I know that potentially you can't fund the number that I have in here. My whole goal is to make sure that we don't go over the Act 34 hearing requirements, because if we do, then we have to have a second hearing at the least, and at the worst, a referendum, which no one does, because you can't get them passed. So what's in the document is the highest number that we can basically do and be within the Act 34 limitations, if that makes sense. So when you see Alicia's financing and things like that and working with Doug, it's basically saying, the project can't be over this, over these numbers in the booklet. I would say in other times, non-COVID screwed-up times, we've always had a budget, you know, $50 million, you can't go over $50 million. And so the Act 34 hearing booklet showed those numbers. But we can't trust that right now. If we're $500,000 over the number, we have to have another hearing. And isn't that the hearing is that big of a deal, it's scheduled in a meeting, but it spends money for the district. You have to have, there's legal fees and a bunch of advertising and everything like that. We'd have waiting periods, it would change our schedule, all sorts of things screw up, get screwed up if you ever had to do another one. I've never had to do another, a second hearing, ever. And I've done dozens and dozens of these projects in 30 years. So it just, but I never had a time like this before either. So that's why I'm sensitive to the fact that this document will be made public for 20 days prior to the meeting. And you're going to adopt at your next meeting cost. And if you look on the page five of the booklet, the Department of Education asks you, or the, it's actually the state law, asks you to adopt two numbers. One is the maximum project cost, and the other one is the maximum building construction cost. So they separate the site and soft costs and things like that from the project through the documents. And so those two numbers in yellow at the bottom there of that page are the two numbers that you'll be adopting in your resolution. I did write dummy resolutions and everything, and Doug has them in Word format. So I've done, I think, most of the work. I just asked for everything to be double-checked, and I put yellows on things to be double-checked, if that makes sense. The rest of the Act 34 hearing, outside of the resolution with the numbers, when we're in the hearing, it's basically a presentation to explain to the community, this is the building that the district is planning on creating, this is the need for the building, this is why we're doing the project. These were the options that were considered. It's a relatively brief format. I can, I'll end up doing most of that presentation for you with a little bit of help from possibly Dr. Walsh. And then it's an explanation about, to the community about how, if this is what we build, how would you finance it? And to be transparent about the numbers. And again, that's, oftentimes people misunderstand when you advertise for the Act 34 hearing, that the numbers are the numbers. They don't, if you haven't done this before, people don't realize that there's a whole bidding process, a public bidding process, that you're going to go through, where the documents and everything goes out. And then you'll get lowest-bid contractors for each one of the packages that we put together. And that is actually what gets, the financing is based on those numbers ultimately, with the construction contingency. So anyway, I know, I'm sorry for the confusion, but it is a lot to, it's a lot of stuff.
So were there questions about the Act 34 process from the board? I probably should have mentioned at the beginning that it's, the board doesn't even have to be here, right? It's...
Correct. It's...
It's nothing, there's no actions are taken. It's handled by the administration and the architects and our finances.
When do we think the date will be finalized?
You guys will have to figure it out.
Okay.
Didn't talk about it yet.
Yeah.
We did, we did talk about wanting to cancel the July facilities meeting, not needing, didn't think we'd have anything to do at that point of the month anyway. And you don't, the board did not schedule any business meetings or committee meetings for July, so it was your month off. However, is July the best timeline, or can we push into August at all?
It could be in August. I don't think there's any impacts under that scenario. There is a 20-day advertising, or there was a 20-day period before you can have the hearing, where we will have had to advertise, and the booklet will have to be available here at the district office for 20 days prior. Then there is a 30-day period afterwards where public comment can, is solicited. And essentially, anyone after the hearing can submit in writing comments to the administration. And in the old days, it was very important because at that point, we would submit everything to the Department of Ed and go through all that. We don't, there's nobody reviewing this at Department of Ed anymore because there's no funding. And, but we follow all the rules because it's the law. And we want to make sure that that gets done.
Would we be ready in July, I guess? Because there's a lot of other things happening in August with, you know, start of school and all that stuff. So if we'd be, if we'd be ready in July 25th, I mean, it's a good date. I mean, it's kind of in our DNA on Tuesdays now.
Okay.
But is that achievable? I like your attitude.
There are, I mean, your solicitor has to be present. There, we have to schedule a report, court reporter to be present to document the, so as long as all that can work out.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll tentatively schedule it for the 25th, making sure we can get bond folks to be here, the financing folks to be here.
And so under that scenario...
I'm gonna early given them the date of July 25th, but...
Okay.
Our bond, our bond underwriter is actually out of the country right now, so...
Okay.
I think she's coming back next week, and I will start work on this.
So the only precursor to that is that, to be able to create the booklet and everything like that, this month, you'd have to adopt the numbers.
Okay. So that would be, I believe I heard you say that Doug has a motion for next week to...
Yeah. The only thing is that the number that is in here for the highest number...
Yeah.
I did the financing myself. It's not correct.
We have to get it together. I got it.
Yeah. So that's the challenge. So I think that's probably, that schedule is probably what'll tell you when you can...
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes. All right. We'll know for sure, and we'll communicate that to the board and start advertising. Thank you.
Thanks.
Dan, thank you.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
All right. One more item, discussion only, future of the soon-to-be three years from now empty elementary schools. So we've had some discussion about this through the last month or so. I think at this time, Mrs. Walsh Turner has a little more of a discussion point to bring to the attention of the board and the audience.
...
Thank you. I was like, where am I? I'm moving this. To just tour three of the buildings. First meeting was more of a meet and greet. The second meeting was so they could tour this building, and then we have toured Memorial and NAMs. The main goal, in 2026, Bethel Park School District will move all K to five students into a new elementary school and vacate six elementary schools. The Subcommittee of the Community members was formed to guide the process of identifying the best community use for the school buildings and make recommendations to the Bethel Park School Board. The goal is to identify use for these properties and the best align with the current priorities and long-term plans of the community. We have a strategic plan, the municipality has a strategic plan, aligning those to meet those. The main goal of this was to achieve revenue-cost neutral solutions for the Bethel Park taxpayers. Finally, we've come up with a repurposing timeline. Mr. Maury is here tonight. We are looking, he is looking for support for the municipality and seeking grants. That'll be done by the end of quarter two in 2023. Quarter three is complete the initial building tours. The committee has taken the months of June and July off, so we'll meet again the end of August as school starts and begin the final tours then. And Mr. Modrak, the Subcommittee Chair, has been working with some of the committee members to conduct a community need survey that will be put out after school starts, to look at what the community needs are. And then come back in the beginning of the year and look at expanding the Subcommittee based on the survey results, again, in Google Form. And then committee town hall meetings to review the status of that, develop a cost benefit analysis by the middle of the year, community survey to prioritize the cost benefit analysis, and then finally, come back to the school board with some options for the buildings to go from there. Mr. Maury, do you want to come up and speak to the letter that was sent in January to help us begin that quarter-two process?
Yes, it's more fun on this side, by the way, as you say. I got a few questions. I don't have a three-minute limit, do I?
No.
No. Thank you very much. Two minutes, okay. I'll talk fast. No, thank you very much for entertaining us tonight, myself, Mr. Genesek, Mr. Councilmagna, we're here.
Mr. Fostuka is here also. He's hiding in that corner back there.
And number one is, we value your relationship and everything we've done over the last several months toward the new school. One of the things we did when this all started was what role the school district played in our recreational programs, not just indoor, the outdoor, the fields, the classrooms, the gyms. And we acknowledge the fact that if you're going to shutter five schools or six schools, that we're not going to all make it up in the new elementary you're doing. So we had our rec department really look at the number of facilities we use of yours, and we certainly appreciate that in all our recreational programs. Number two is, we said, what would we do if they went away? And what buildings, if any, and we'll be selfish here, what could we maintain for the municipality to support the recreational programs we have? We informally discussed this from a council level, knowing you were going to be doing the evaluation. In January, we sent off an email requesting the Washington School and the Ben Franklin School. We do not have any formal plans to do anything with it, but the initial intent, to be perfectly clear, would probably be to take the buildings down. Just because we assumed ownership doesn't mean that the needs of those buildings just go away. We don't have deep pockets that we're going to be able to fund these buildings. So our initial thought process was to be able to take them down, Washington being adjacent to the Montour Trail, possibly add another field, and also do a little park there that would really complement what the Montour Trail did. And the second, obviously, Ben Franklin, potentially take it down, long-term look at an indoor recreational facility, but really maintaining the green space, enhancing what's there, the soccer fields. It's not going to fully take place for all the elementary schools, but it'll give us a start to try to maintain some of the green space. Once again, we informally... Once again, we informally talked about if we were to come to an agreement, I'll give you my opinion, it'll be subject to council verification or confirmation, but A, that it would be in the agreement that we would not be able to sell the properties. So if the municipality was at any time, not just this council, but 20 years from now, that we would have to turn it back over to the school district and wouldn't be able to sell it. The second one would be potentially if the district, and hopefully, not in my lifetime, but if you need to build a new school and you needed property, that you would reserve the right as a district to come back to the municipality and, and take the properties back, provided you would reimburse the municipality for any monies they invested. So it's really a partnership. We don't want you to think we're going to take the buildings and, and sell the properties, but we also want to make sure we maintain it for the community and what the best use is. So what we asked for was the building so we could have some type of letter of intent, knowing there's a lot of working and moving parts between now and when the new building opens, but what we would need is a commitment to, to transfer the ownership to the municipality. Once we get that, we could potentially apply for grants. The first would probably be a strategic plan. We did a recreational study, I believe, four or five years ago now, on an overall strategic plan, what the best use is, what we would need, what we would need to enhance it. So the first phase would be a study, then once we came up, the council came up with a plan, we would then go out and start, you know, working towards grant. We don't want to get in the way of the grants, we're working on it with the new school for certain, but by the same token, we need to plan three to five years out. We've been successful in recent years of being able to do that, to, you know, go to the state, go to our, the people at May, some of the foundations, if they would be willing to support, but really planning ahead is where we've been most successful. So we would be looking for some type of a commitment to transfer ownership. We can work out how. I, I've said this before, but I know on the building permit side, that we have given the, you know, a break, because we have a great relationship. We, historically, it's a 1% fee that we have waived, not only for the new K-5 center, but we did on the Phase Two of the Independence Project, and we've been working with you on some of the grants, that we're hoping we're going to be able to apply on your behalf, whether it's safer schools, or some of these other type R cap grant fundings that may be available. So maybe a little goodwill in there at some point in time, but we just would really like some type of a, a commitment that, once you're ready, it would transfer, and then the future boards, future councils can kind of figure out, three years from now, once ever the dust is settled, where we end up and what we do.
Right, I think the main goal was, if we go back to best align with current priorities and long-term goals, is not to have another Logan's School.
Yes, and I'll go back even further, even the Park Avenue School. We learned our lesson that
Correct, those of us that went to school here and have lived here a long time.
That was before my time, just so you know. But, you know, we've learned, and we don't want it. We want, I, I like the fact that you're being proactive and looking now. It's, a lot of things can happen, you've got a lot on your plate, but when the transition occurs, it'll be smooth, you'll have a plan, and it won't be a liability that you're going to have to worry about and pay for. So that's why we kind of wanted to get out in front of it, knowing that we're going to be looking at what to do with the facilities. Maybe we're being selfish, but we want to maintain them as community assets and see what we can do to maintain and enhance the recreational opportunities for all of our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maury.
By the way, thank you and the entire council last night for the support. You gave us all in approving the projects. It was unanimous, so thank you very much. And to your point, I think we have worked together very closely on this. I think one thing that, you know, just looking at the two pictures on the board, the one thing that's helped us is that, you know, you worked on the strategic plan for, you know, the municipality, we developed one for the school. I think that's helped us actually work together. I mean, one example, and this is for other people, you know, listening here, but, you know, we, we had a debate about sidewalks, okay? Sidewalks were really important to Bethel Park in the strategic plan. We debated that, we came up with a solution. There were some logistical problems, you know, more than landscaping problems, but some topography problems in achieving that. But, you know, those are some of the things that we've worked through, but, you know, having these plans helps us understand what's important to each other, and ultimately, you know, the sum of them are what's important to Bethel Park as a whole. And so when you, when you work on strategic projects like this, you know, it's, it's nice to have some kind of a picture of what are our priorities in the future, five years, 10 years down the road, because it doesn't really matter what they are today, because that's going to change, okay? So these plans help us really, you know, aim for the future, not for today. So I think, I think we'll get it right because of that. So thank you for your support through this whole process.
So I believe the next steps, I believe, go to our solicitor, and you can work with their solicitor
Mr. McTernan.
Mr. McTernan, to get this all collectively, working in the right direction. Again, full transparency, when I was asked to be on this committee, my main goal was to not live down the street again from another, not make another resident live down the street again from a Logan's School. I was there, I did that, growing up, and it wasn't used, and then it was boarded up, but it was still accessible for certain situations. So for those of you that have been in the community a very long time, that's what this committee is, and Mr. Modrak and I believe that best use and get it done in the three years, so it is turned over to the next possible solutions for the community.
Yes, thank you. Like you said, some of us remember it, as has been said before, about some of the buildings sitting empty and being eyesore, so we're trying to get ahead of the curve, opening up a dialogue, and I, like Mr. Maury said, working on a partnership to see what best needs are met by the municipality, the school district, and the community as a whole. So how our properties can best serve everybody from, from generations to come. Does anybody on this panel have any questions?
No, but thank you very much for all the information. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have five funding items? Anything in particular? Take those five funding
I can, Mr. Christian, thank you. Item number one, payment for Independence Middle School Phase Two renovations to Site Logic Energy Services, Inc., for a total of $1,620,140 for the Phase Two Giza project renovations at Independence Middle School. Number two, agreement with Lois Johnson Learning and Child Care Center, Inc. Number three, amendment to Maserro Construction Management Services, LLC contract for the new K-5 elementary school project. Item number four, payment for Independence Middle School Phase Two renovations in the amount of $31,804.50 to the Hayes Design Group. And then item number five is just for information only, it's just an update on our Fund 31 and Fund 32 financials. So I move to approve items number one through four, unless anyone would like anything held out there.
Second?
One thing that I'd like to touch on real quick, Mr. McCoson, please correct me if I'm wrong at all here, but item number three is the amendment to Maserro's construction contract for the elementary school project, really just serves to update the fact that we are changing from finishing the project in August of 2025 to July of 2026, correct?
Yeah, the construction period is longer, so they're requesting an amendment based on that new construction schedule.
Does anyone else have any questions or concerns about any of those four items?
So the motion was made by Mr. Grisbeck and seconded by Ms. Janicek to adopt the four items under the Finance Committee.
Voting is open.
Sorry.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I guess, are there any questions on the, the finance report items that Mr. Grisbeck mentioned? Okay. Okay, that is the end of our business portion of the meeting. We're next to public comments. Any public comments on anything related to school matters?
[inaudible]
Two minutes.
Holly Lisak, 880 Herschauer Drive. I heard you say recently that you want to have us all come together in peace and have everything work out well in Bethel Park, and I agree with you, I think it's awesome. We, we should be at peace, sending our children to school. And there's a lot of parents that aren't at peace, and I will reiterate what I have been saying about the pride things in our schools. I don't appreciate it, and I don't appreciate Dan being front and center of the gay pride parade downtown Pittsburgh, especially, go ahead, smile. Should my kid come to you? Do you protect him? He's a straight kid. Are you sure? Because your shirt said something different. You protect trans kids. Do we have trans kids in the school? Do we? Little kids in fifth and sixth grade, Neil Armstrong, trans? Okay, there's puberty blockers involved.
Please address the, the entire board, not individually.
Well, I'm sorry, but that's why I'm here. I'm addressing Dan because you stand for all kids.
No, no, please.
Okay, Dan stands for all children, and I would expect every one of you up there not to do something like that, not be in a Trump parade, or anything like that. Truthfully, be respectful to our kids, because when, if I, if and when I run for school board, I will back out of my Trump parades out of respect for all the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
I'm Chris Cornick, and I live on 220 Bluestone Drive. I'm here tonight to ask you to please stop all the signage and the symbolism in our schools. These things are bringing attention to our differences instead of the things we have in common. If certain groups can have their symbolism and push their beliefs in our schools, then why shouldn't we have our Christianity beliefs and the cross that Jesus died on as payment for our sins in the schools? The school is allowing these groups to push an agenda, pushing their beliefs on our children, on the next generation. I stand for hundreds of thousands of others, probably millions, when I say that there is an intentional division happening. I am not asking you to believe my religion. Don't make me or our children believe in your religion by continuing to display these signs and symbols in our schools. I see a change happening, and it is not pleasing to God. We are to love one another, we are not to cause division among our children. I leave you with these questions. Do we even have a constitution anymore? Do we have really any freedom of religion? Please remove these signs and things, or allow our crosses, Bible verses, and Christian displays about Jesus in our schools. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any online?
No comments.
No. Any board comments?
Yes.
Yes?
I actually do have something. I want to thank the municipality of Bethel Park and the folks at BPTV, specifically Dave Cable, Drew Dowell, and all their staff, and Diana Alberta, and April Splat, and Amy Hart and her daughter Sophie. All of us worked really hard together to produce a Live Well episode that airs tomorrow on BPTV and the municipality's website and Facebook, and I think it's available later probably on BPTV and their YouTube, and it is an episode about presuming competence and holding high expectations, and it's a really important and foundational concept. People who work in special education and education in general probably recognize that. It's about believing that students and all people in our lives can actually do a thing that might seem difficult, and becoming problem solvers, and finding ways to help them, and believing the best in people, and looking for ways to provide support. So it's on tomorrow at 7:00, and I'm really honored that I was asked to do that, and I appreciate the municipality for helping us put that out. It's a great episode, so I hope everybody checks it out. Thanks.
I'd like to thank our administration, who did a fantastic job with graduation, really good event, went off really seamlessly, and I thought it was really nice that, you know, we could honor the baseball team who came back after a really tough loss, and they could still walk in graduation and join the rest of their class. So that was really, felt lucky to be a part of that day for a lot of students. I also want to thank our municipality, President Maury, Mr. Consul-Magno, Mr. Janicek, who, you know, came today, and also all the collaboration that's kind of gone on through this elementary center project, you know, whether it be the approvals for different buildings, or working on grants, or working with ideas for the buildings in the future. I think it's really fantastic that, you know, you all have been so involved with that, so that our elementary buildings, you know, do have great uses in the future, whether it be soccer fields, or football fields, or whatever. And then, you know, just speaking purely on my own behalf, and not on behalf of anyone else on the board, I just want to say, you know, I'm a straight, cis, white male. Just because I show support and love for all of our neighbors, you know, doesn't mean that I'm singling anyone out, whether it's a straight kid, or a trans kid, or a gay kid. I'm going to show the same support and respect for all of them.
Any other comments?
Just for transparency, I will not be at the meeting next week. I will be on vacation.
So you will be transparent. You will not be here.
Very true, you will see right through
Okay.
[laughing]
Very good. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Where was the first motion? Everybody seconded?
Down.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.